Um, we are recording this session, so I just want to remind everyone that. Um, my name is Gracie Simmendinger and I'm the president of the Downtown Council of Jack's Chamber. Um, and want to share that this recording will be available for our new Downtown Council podcast. So if you haven't already searched the Downtown Council on your podcast provider, please do so now and hit subscribe. It's a great way to stay um up to date on all of our meetings um for those, you know, if if you have to miss any of those. Um, I want to give just a brief overview of Downtown Council for those of you that are new to us. Um, we are one of eight Chamber councils and simply put Downtown Council cares about the future of our city. We represent Jacksonville's business community, including major corporations, growing businesses and startups. Our goal is to connect one another so that downtown and greater Jacksonville will thrive and prosper. In a city with seven bridges, we are the eighth bridge. Our meetings offer a brave space to discuss local topics and we look forward to different perspectives on what makes our city great and ways to make it better. We also pride ourselves on keeping you informed of local business and civic issues by bringing top tier speakers to our meetings. Today is no different. I'm so excited uh for today's program. Uh, we have two speakers. Um, so our today's speakers are Alan Devault, who's the Executive Director, and Laura Phillips Edgcombe, who's the Director of Development for Build Up Downtown. You may recognize Laura. She's actually on the board and our um Programs Director with Downtown. So it feels very personal to have her here and giving us a fantastic update of about their newly formed organization and how uh Build Up Downtown will positively grow downtown Jacksonville. Um, I am a volunteer as well as everyone else on the Downtown Council Board. So if you are a Downtown Council Board member, will you please wave to our attendees this morning? We are also excited that three of our Downtown Council Board members recently attended the Chamber Leadership Trip in St. Louis a few weeks back. At this point, so Laura was one of them. She's going to share a little bit more about the leadership trip um during her presentation. So at this time, I will turn it over to Ben Johnson and Terry Bunch to share more about the trip and their key takeaways. Ben and Terry, take it away.
Thank you.
Ben, you want to kick off?
Uh, yeah, I sure, sure will. Uh, hi, I'm Ben Johnson with Martin Coffee Company and I'm um, I was excited to represent Downtown Council and the SBLYs on the leadership trip. But it was a fantastic, fantastic trip. Um, if you ever have the opportunity to go on a leadership trip, I would definitely uh take, take you up on it. Um, I would definitely do it. It was, I met some amazing people, but this trip I think was designed to really highlight what St. Louis has done and what has done right in their downtown development uh with their sports complex, uh, which is very similar to what they want to do with Lot J. So we got to see firsthand, watch a Cardinals game and watch the Jaguars via big screen TV at their Lot J project. But I'll just say two more things than I'll let Terry say, but um a couple of great takeaways was another large emphasis on, was on minority businesses and what they've done in St. Louis, but also what we can do better to make minority businesses succeed in Jacksonville. As well as, wish I could show my photo, but we had, we were very lucky to have the artist, um, gosh, his name first. Jeffrey, yeah, Jeffrey was able to uh, the artist behind the Lerp uh Landing Artwork Project be able to speak to us. He flew up from Orlando uh and gave a great, great presentation. I think there were some people on the fence with the artwork before his presentation. And after he completed it, there was a completely different misunderstanding of what the artwork represents and why he came up with that design. Um, and so if you are on the fence or are interested in learning more, there's some great new videos that he's posted that explains exactly why he chose that exact design, um, which I was blown away. I was completely. And uh, he was a really, really cool guy, not only as an artist, but also as a, you know, just a speaker in general. So if you ever had the opportunity to meet him, I would definitely highlight that. And uh, Terry, I'll let you mention a couple of things too that you might have.
Yeah, this was uh, this was my uh fourth trip and uh, and uh, as usual, the, the networking and the people that you're with is, is, is as significant as where you're at. Um, but um, really, really enjoyed it, exceeded my expectations for St. Louis, uh, quite honestly. They did a uh, a great job on, on their union station and refurbishing that. And and it makes you think what Prime Osborne potentially could be uh at some point. Uh, but I, I have to say my biggest um takeaway was, was the uh, the statue in the presentation by, by Jeffrey. It really, I was one of those guys that was on the fence like, hmm. Uh, but after seeing that and then seeing the plans for the park they've got um planned for around that, I'm, I'm definitely a supporter and, and a fan of that. The, the uh, the Cordish Group uh has a number of developments around uh the country and they are the ones that are, are slated um to, to work on uh Lot J uh when, when that's approved, not if, I think. Um, and uh, they really did a, a, a great job in the community around uh the stadium there. It, it was alive even on a Thursday afternoon, which was uh really surprising to me. So um, so I would, I would um reiterate what Ben said, if you get an opportunity, it's worth the time and the uh, and if you're paying for it yourself, the uh, uh, the money uh to, to attend it. It's a great, great event.
And uh, Terry, let me add, just add the other two things. Uh, we had an amazing speaker. She was the CEO of Graybar. She was super impressive. She's one of their leaders in St. Louis, but Graybar is based out of St. Louis. She was an amazing speaker. Uh, as a, as a women-owned CEO, she was really incredible. The other thing was if you haven't turned on the TV recently, but Jacksonville has become one of, is becoming the fintech capital of the world. I mean, we have just gained so much fintech uh, uh, business in Jacksonville and we were able to highlight and take a tour of some of the fintech things they were doing in St. Louis, uh, which was super impressive. And so we're hoping to bring more fintech to Jacksonville and it was just exciting and kind of, I think Terry and everybody else that went on this whole leadership trip came back with a whole sense of enthusiasm for downtown and hopefully the city leaders will bring it back and.
Yeah, they've done a real nice job. They called it the Cortex Innovation Community, but they did a really nice job on, on that and it's, it's grown into its own entity.
Cool. But that's, that's everything in a nutshell.
Great. Thank you so much. And I'm sure we'll hear more from Alan and um Laura as they're both on, on the trip as well. But thank you so much for not only representing Downtown Council on the trip, but coming back and providing those words of wisdom to us as we looked forward to continue to, to build our city. Um, at this time, I will rap, now recognize all new members of the Downtown Council. From Easy Open RX, we have Jesse Secarelli, Interstate Professional Group, Kalen Williams, and your CBD store in downtown Jacksonville, Davina Bender. Welcome to Downtown Council. All right, um, our Downtown Council Vice President Benjamin Alcorn is now going to share a little bit more about today's speakers. So take it away, Ben.
Thanks, Gracie. Yeah, I was, good, good morning, everybody. Thanks for coming and uh, I'm really excited about this program and, and normally I would at this point in time read a bio of Alan and Laura. But that didn't really feel right. This is a brand new project that they're going to be talking about and it's really exciting. And I think it really comes from a personal place for both of them. Um, so rather than me uh reading a bio, I'm actually just going to turn it over to them to talk a little bit about their story, their history in Jacksonville, and why they made this big leap, this, to, to do this project. Um, so I'll let them kind of just do it themselves. So I'll turn it over to Alan. Alan, good morning. Good to see you.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you. Thank you so much. And uh, thanks for having us and giving us this platform to talk about Build Up Downtown. We're both really excited to be here and um, and why we're both involved. Um, a little bit about, you know, in my former life as a restaurateur, we were members of the chambers, but we were never really engaged as we should, could have been. Um, certainly uh, an 8:00 AM gym call wasn't on the calendar back then, but I'm excited to be here now. And um, I've seen a couple of them so far. Uh, they're great programs, um, but big shoes to fill with Steve Atkins and all his great projects and Diana's great energy at the Cultural Council. Um, but we've been on the job for about four and three weeks respectively. Um, it's going great and uh, we've had a lot of great feedback and support and, and ideas, which is one of the greatest things is uh, some great ideas on how we can help and be a part. Um, but I guess a brief background on me, I was born and raised in Jacksonville, um, went to Fishware Elementary and then uh ended up in, we were part of the Flight to the Suburbs in the eighties and ended up in Orange Park. Um, Go Raiders, um, went to uh College in Charleston and uh then lived in Savannah about five years after that. And it was really during their um, their individual revitalization of their downtowns. It wasn't at beforehand, but it was kind of at the start. And so I got to be a part of that and see that and then moved back to Jacksonville about 20 years ago. And I've been involved in restaurant management mostly um from um management ownership uh at both Piscotti's and BB's and then um Black Sheep and Bellwether and um a few other projects. Um, but a couple of years ago, I decided I kind of want to choose a different path for the next 20 years. And um, being part of downtown was a big part of that. Um, I, one of the funnest things I did at Black Sheep was uh the development of that building from uh, really from the land purchase all the way to operation. So, you know, I knew being part of development growth and uh, small business was important. I got to do a couple of wall changes for restaurants along the way and uh, a few other things like Bellwether. So um, you know, when I decided to leave the restaurant business, that's what I wanted to do. And uh, it could have been an Alex Abakas scooter tour who kind of really changed it. But um, growing up, when I was about eight or nine, my dad used to take us to work on Saturdays because my mom wanted us out of the house, had a twin brother. And uh, so we'd drive through La Villa and my dad would say, you know, soon all this is going to be built up, soon, soon, soon. And that was over 30 years ago. So I'm excited to see that that's changing and I think we're really over the hill. And um, I got the opportunity to do this and I'm really uh excited and feel honored. I did spend about eight weeks working for Lori at DIA, so I got a lot of infrastructure there, but I'm really excited to work and especially with Lori, because she's got this more passion probably, so. I'll let her take that.
Thanks, Alan. Uh, good morning, everybody. Um, if you've joined us before, you know a lot about me because you get to listen to my two and a half cents on a lot of topics that I'm now very fortunate to be um able to do every day of my life. Um, but for those of you that don't know me, I am Laura Phillips Edgcombe and I am a third generation Jacksonville resident. Um, I grew up hearing stories of my grandparents talking about going downtown to go shopping. They lived in the Riverside area and then my daddy, um, you know, my, my grandparents moved him out, him and his brother out to um the Berg, out to Middleburg, um, because they were getting in trouble all the time, but they would drive all they got to Jacksonville to go shopping because it was the closest place to go. And they talk about those stories, you know, growing up and my dad and my mom met in a hotel bar downtown and um, you know, those sorts of things. It's just Jacksonville for me carries so much love. Um, and I very much believe that I am a true Jacksonvilleian. Um, my husband and I are raising a son who's 14 and we, you know, really, really hope and where my passion, as Alan calls it, comes from is that I really, although I want him to go away, like he needs to go away to college, go experience the world, go do those things, I really want him to come back to Jacksonville. I really want him to feel that this is home base and that there's enough for him um and his generation um here in Jacksonville, that it's not just, oh, I went home. It's, oh, I can grow here. I can become a successful business leader. I can run a nonprofit organization. I can be an artist. Um, I can work in healthcare, you know. There's such a myriad of business opportunities here in Jacksonville, but I want him to, I want him to come home to that. Um, for those of you, um, I know I, my, my history in this, um, about 10 years ago, we were having a conversation and I was trying to figure out what I was doing 10 years ago, because we'll talk about kind of the decade. 10 years ago, I was sitting um at Cowork Jack's, which was a coworking space above Purdue, with sticky notes all over the wall because we were creating One Spark. And it's crazy to think about 10 years' time passed since One Spark. And um, almost everyone on this call, I would assume knows, at least has heard of One Spark and has, you know, watched the, the, you know, the momentum grow on that and then what came from there and moving forward. And while, you know, that specifically as, as a whole may not feel like a success, there were a million successes along the way. And those have kind of helped build, you know, where we're going in the future. And so from there, um, I moved on to be a senior prevent, um, uh, senior event producer for PRI Productions and gained a lot of in and outs within the Jacksonville community. You know, I had great ties through family, but actually making those business relationships was huge and monumental for me. Um, as well as for the community, I believe, you know, the more people you can get together, the more collective ideas, the more successful we can be. Um, and then from there, I left production and I went into um a, a small entrepreneurial restaurant business. Uh, Dwayne Belikoff and Jonathan Cobb created the Bread and Board in 2016 and I joined them um in the beginning of 2018. I was with them for the last three years and grew their uh small business company on the catering and event side um pretty instrumentally. And we all moved into downtown and everything was great and wonderful. And then we kind of got to a point where their program is so wonderful and large and the brick and mortars have got three rest, four restaurants now. Um, you know, and it was, and I was given this wonderful opportunity to join Alan with Build Up and just couldn't say no. Um, you know, I'm, I'm the outside in my free time. I, I do a lot of advocacy work for downtown. Um, and this just seemed like the perfect fit. So I, you know, publicly want to thank everyone that's involved with this. And there's a lot of community uh support in the background. And so just thank you very much. Uh, to that, I believe I'm the one that's going to share a screen and I'm going to get that up and then Alan's going to start rolling. We're going to kind of go back and forth between uh the, the slides. And since it's not going to make sense to bring Ben back on for two seconds, I'll tell you, put your, put your questions in the chat. Um, and they'll be on the backside as always moderating and I promise that we will answer all questions, even difficult ones. Um, and we hope that we can give you all as much information as possible and we look forward to our new relationship with everyone. Give me just a moment, let me share this. Okay, can everyone see my screen? Are we good? Okay, all right, Alan, you want to go ahead and go?
All right, sure. Yeah, so um, you know, Laura's going to talk about the vision and the mission a little bit, but the first statement on this is really um, sums it all up pretty well. Advocating and facilitating smart development and preservation in downtown Jacksonville. And all of those have a place, but advocate is really what the biggest part of what we want to do is. And uh, to support and recommend um the best projects in downtown through um social media posts, occasional email newsletters, uh attendance and championing them at DIA, DDRB and uh City Hall of me. And also kind of get the word out there that when there's a great project, um, we want to amplify that. And we want everybody to know about great projects that are out there and uh, ways to support them. Um, so that's a big part of what we want to do. Facilitating, um, a lot of that is about connecting and I like to call matchmaking um some degree. Uh, we find, you know, dormant or active property owners and connect them with developers, um, prospective owners um with existing opportunities. Um, and all of those with operators. Um, with our kind of small business background, you know, really getting the operators in, in a small piece by piece basis to some degree. The small pieces can fill in the blocks and the holes in the uh, the particular areas. So really, um, really a lot of that, we've got a lot of eyes on us right now, speaking with brokers around um from the East Coast. Um, a lot of people want to come to Jacksonville, um, and we need to take advantage of that as quickly as possible. Um, you know, I've heard obviously about the restaurants a lot more and retail, but um, across the sector. And you know, we've got great folks like The Chamber and Jack's USA that are taking care of those fintech large groups that people mentioned earlier and that's their, their space and they do it well. And um, we're just, you know, want to get with um smaller businesses as well. Um, and then preserving is important. You know, the um, DIA has a great new incentive program. They call it the DPRP, but it's really about giving uh developers the opportunity to preserve buildings that really need it and are part of our history. Um, you know, they go back, it's, we've got a few of them still left and, and to incentivize people to redo those from the Barnett to the Federal Reserve. You know, the Trio is going to be a great project. Um, but there's other ones in the works that are kind of, I call it on the back hip of the City Hall, like the Ambassador, Jones Furniture, the old, old independent light building, um, Federal Reserve I mentioned. But um, repurposing those buildings is really important. So um, preservation has a great place with development. Uh, next, I think that's you, Laura. Uh, we'll go through this um little bit, just the overview of the highlights, the vision, mission, um, our goals, uh, and then community impact. Um, and then how we can support DVI and DIA. You know, that was another big part of what we want to do, um, is support the groups that are doing great work. Um, we don't propose that we can do better, but we do propose that we can support them and build that ecosystem of uh downtown. Laura?
Giving a lot of things over here, so I appreciate it. I'm also trying to keep the dog quiet in the background, so that's going on as well. Okay, so let's roll into our vision. You guys, you know, in, in any organization, a vision and a mission and a community impact statement, those are all really critical as well as what we are trying to accomplish. Um, and so with full disclosure on our vision, um, it's DVI's vision. Um, and they, they gave us permission to utilize it and move it because, I mean, a big part of what we're doing is supporting DVI and DIA. So um, our vision is a dynamic 24-hour pedestrian-friendly downtown Jacksonville that serves as a premier center for the arts, dining, retail, entertainment, business and urban living in North Florida. I mean, I think everyone on this call for Downtown Council especially, that's, this is what we all want, right? So we all share this collective vision and therefore have uh no problem getting a little help from DVI um as we put this forward. You know, when we talk about the ecosystem of downtown, whether that is DVI, DIA, um, Jack's USA, Visit Jack's, there's some wonderful nonprofits, Lift, you know, Jesse Valdi-Pontt. Um, when we look at all of those and our collective ecosystems, it's almost like a, like a Venn diagram, right? So we've got all these wonderful orgs and then there's the spots that are in between. And so because we are here adapting a vision that belongs to one of those orgs, it's important for everyone to understand that our purpose here is to kind of help fill those gaps. Um, there, as Alan stated, we're not trying to do anything that anyone else is already doing successfully. We just very much want to offer the support and advocacy and be able to facilitate um, and support all of these orgs that are already doing wonderful jobs downtown. Um, um, you know, we are actively and have had some really early successes. Um, and we really, you know, just and Alan said, you know, three and four weeks respectively, I um, in my very first week was us going on leadership. So that was kind of a whole week just there and gone, which was great because it was very, it was amazing to listen to different speakers. Um, and we had a lot of really great um, um, content while we were on the trip. And it was amazing to listen to everyone talk about, you know, looking back, you know, if they could do something different or if they could do, or what did they do best? Either, or, you know, it was, they, they should all work together and they should all collaborate and make sure that there is, while there are many voices, all of them are important. Um, and that, you know, and so with that, just in our first couple of weeks, we've already had a lot of interest and a lot of people want to meet with us and tell us their, you know, their side and, and not even like a your side, my side, but just like their story, like where they're coming from and why they want to do what they're doing downtown. Um, and everybody, everyone that we're speaking with wants this pedestrian-friendly, you know, downtown scene with lots of arts and culture and businesses thriving and residents living down there and being able to walk to go to a bodega to go grab, you know, a quick coffee and an apple and, and those, and Alan's shaking his head because he loves the bodega idea. It's his baby, so he's really happy. But it's kind of one of those things where you, you know, ultimately, what we have found is that, you know, in speaking with some of the orgs, is the organizations, is that there is definitely a need for support. While everyone's act, you know, working really hard, there is um, um, a need for collaboration. So we're not duplicating anything that anyone else is doing. We absolutely are collaborating with as many people that want to collaborate with us um, and being able to bring this vision to life. And with that, then there's, you know, there's the, there's the, the mission side of it. We are a nonprofit organization. Um, that is, um, while we are not, we were, you know, it's important to us and Alan will speak to who right now our backers are currently. Um, and he will also though reinforce that while we have some very instrumental and amazing support to get us launched, but ultimately, um, you know, the only way we're going to get to our mission statement is if we have um support from a, a lot. So, you know, I, the way that I say it is it's great to have a couple of bigs, but I, you know, we'd rather have a lot, a little gives. And that, that shows that we're more community focused and diverse. Um, our mission is, simply put, as possible, is Build Up Downtown will advocate and facilitate smart development and preservation in downtown Jacksonville through communicating, connecting and educating current and future businesses and stakeholders. We serve as a privately funded nonprofit resource and supporter of the Downtown Investment Authority and Downtown Vision, Inc. to reinforce downtown as the city's unique epicenter for business, history, culture, education and entertainment. You know, it, it's, it's a mission statement, especially for a nonprofit org. It kind of speaks to what our identity looks like and where, where we're going with that. And I had a very, very insightful conversation earlier today, actually, already with a, with a great friend um on what our identity looks like. And you know, so as our identity changes, right, because identity um is, is a collection of Jacksonville's identities, a collection of our history and then also what our current needs are and what, what, what the future look like, right? And that's ever-changing. And the only, you know, the mission for us kind of brings us always, will always bring us back to when we're making decisions and when we're having conversations, it'll always bring us back to, this is what our, our job is. This is what we're here to do. This is what we're um here to, to achieve. And Alan will speak to in the next couple of slides exactly what those goals look like and, and what, and how we plan on getting there. Um, it, it's also um really important to understand that, that we as an org, you know, if we're doing our job right, we won't have a job at some point. Because at some point, we won't, we will have achieved this mission and at that point, we'll be able to go on to do other things to help support other people in other ways. Um, making sure that this mission is forever held forward. All right, Alan, I'm going to hand it back over to you for the community impact because this, this one, this one came from Alan's heart. So I think it's important for him to read it. You're on mute, Alan.
Yes, sorry. So thank you. Yeah, this one was uh, actually it's right from our 501(c)(3) application, but uh, it did come from the heart for sure. So um, you know, every downtown should be a thriving in the heartbeat of a, of a city. And that's what makes great cities great is that they have a really thriving downtown. And so uh Jacksonville should be no different. Um, you know, over the years um that I've been back here and even reading from afar when I was away, you know, Jacksonville's had a lot of start and stops. Um, but right now I think we're on the doorstep of major change and that's why I've kind of uh staked my um, current next part of my career on it is seeing that we're about to be over that hill that we've been pushing up for so long. So um, just looking forward for um, you know, Jacksonville to be the unique epicenter of down of the city with business, history, culture, education and entertainment. So um, I think we can um impact that and uh, with a lot of collaboration and a lot of support, we can uh get there. All right, so some of the goals and um, you know, when we first put these together, they kind of left a lot of fluff. It's, you know, communicate, connect, create, educate, support. Who doesn't want to do all that sort of stuff? Um, but they're really, you know, there's a lot of meaning to it. Um, and there's examples that have happened already, you know. Um, and communicating incentives for development and opportunities. You know, there's a major, I'll call it kind of a Dean and DeLuca-esque type store that's coming out of the Northeast that wants to come down. And uh, we've already had a uh conversation with the contractor on uh what incentives are available in DIA and trying to connect that and help them do that process. So that's uh really important. Um, connecting developers with available buildings and properties or with city agencies. Um, already, already had an opportunity to do that. Um, a former ED of a historic um preservation uh group in Jacksonville was looking to do stuff in Riverside and Springfield. And then when we told uh them about the opportunities in downtown, now they're looking downtown instead. So, you know, really connecting those dots is important. Um, creating, um, creating opportunities for development, property owners to be plugged in and, and back to the matchmaking, um, more support for small businesses by connecting them. Um, you know, there's, there's, we've had that already, you know, just in a few short weeks, there's a property owner who noticed a guy in Bay Meadows or South Side and it's a speakeasy and they want to come downtown. So they connected us with, with that group so that we can find the um, the right opportunity. Um, my bodega built, which is a longer story, but I'm trying to desperately put together a um food store that also has other opportunities with some recent legislation taking place in Tallahassee. I think, I think it can happen. Um, educate, that's a big part that I'm excited about. I think the most, the biggest one. And it's recently made more headlines, which I'm excited, maybe not headlines, bylines, uh, is RevGrants. You know, a lot of people see these huge um incentive packages that are given out. And what people don't realize in a lot of cases, a lot of these are self-generated. You know, what is a RevGrant? But for a development, this money would not be available to give back. So I think educating is a big part of what we want to do. And then supporting, you know, supporting um DVI, DIA. I mean, just as recently as the Fieric Invitational, Laura and her uh awesome organizational skills helped put together the bars um in collaboration with EBIT, DVI for sure. And I got the bars on the boats uh put together and was there at 6:30 AM, something like that. So um, you know, that's a, a big part of what we want to be, we want to do. So um, uh, diversity of downtown is important as well. Um, uh, some of the best programs that I had, and I think it was mentioned earlier by Ben maybe, was um the diversity of both the businesses and the, the female CEO who, from Guyton. Um, and we had a, a great talk, uh, Jesus um from, from Jack's was on one of those panels. Got to have dinner with him in a group earlier this week and really got to connect and talk with him. And so those were great, great programs as well, but. All right. Next slide, Laura, unless you have something to add on that?
You know, I always have things to add, but you did great.
So these are some of the things with DIA that we had talked to them about where we could fit in. You know, we want to support them. They are tight on staff. They're also tight in other ways because of politics and funding and such. So however, we can help them out. The first recruiting developers, you know, doing the scooter tours. If you haven't done a scooter tour before, Alex Depakas does a great one. Now Laura and I get to take them over. So we'll hope to be just half as good the first couple of times. But it's really an opportunity to show people what's happening downtown and all the things that are in process and planning and such. So the next is kind of act as an owner's assistant. We're not a rep of DIA, but we want to help people out, kind of like the, the, or sorry, the wine concept that I mentioned earlier. The other is proactive relationships with property owners and businesses. You know, DVI does such a great job at that, but you know, any help that we can get, that they can get. You know, I recently saw on the DIA or DDRB schedule that Bellwether is getting a sidewalk enhancement grant. Because there's these incentives out there that not many people don't know about. DIA put in place in the past couple of years. There's a fab rep, the food and beverage retail enhancement program, the sidewalk enhancement program, all these great opportunities for future and current businesses to take advantage of. So we want to get the word out there. Local state legislation, another kind of thing that's going through. It just got passed by city council is the J bill. We're reducing the seating requirements in downtown from 100 to 50 seats so that a full service restaurant can get a full bar. I've been involved with a couple of those in the past years in different neighborhoods, but downtown will be the first place in Jacksonville and maybe the state to go down to 50. And it really just helps people kind of fit into these historic properties. They're spatially constricted and also in that area, you know, COVID where people want more space. They don't want to have tables jammed right next to each other. So that's something that we work closely with DIA and getting passed. So it'll go to Tallahassee in January and then by July 1st, the law most likely. The next slide. Marketing, you know, a big part of what we're going to do, as we said, between advocating and educating is going to be a marketing. And so we're going to work with DVI. Kat over there is fantastic as well as the whole group. But, you know, we're not here to reinvent the wheel. You know, we're, when we get our website out, it's going to point to DIA's website, DVI's website a lot. So DIA is going to focus on investors. DVI kind of does lifestyle, if you will, but we want to work with them. And then the rest of, we've kind of gone over smart development based on best standards. We do have, Enes Davis is one of our board members who's one of, you know, incredibly smart planner and historian and et cetera. So, you know, we're not going into it as a couple of restaurant tours and think they know how to develop. And then the coordination, we kind of went over that coordination of efforts with all the organizations and others that aren't listed. You know, we're meeting with U L I to see how we can collaborate with them, have a pretty good relationship and meeting with Visit Jax next week, I think, and see kind of how we can, you know, bring everybody into the fold and kind of keep everybody, you know, be that connection between the groups.
And now we're back to me.
Laura.
So this part, you know, we've been very fortunate to have both DIA and DVI on the calls, right? With downtown council. So if you were able to join us for either one of those calls, you know, you were able to hear where they were going and what their thoughts were and kind of see where some of their, where their visions and their missions and their, you know, projects were going. If not, you can go to our YouTube channel and watch them again. Just kind of throw that out there, a quick plug for downtown council. Because it's important, I think, that you understand what DVI and DIA are doing so that you can better understand what we're doing. And to that, that's why we kind of listed out what our support for DIA and DVI are specifically because they're doing a million other things as well. We're just here kind of to stay, you know, in our lane per se, being able to help. And some of the areas that we can help for DIA are the ones that Alan just mentioned. And then our support for DVI, I mean, DVI is so encompassing in what they do. And actually, you know, I had a meeting with Kat Hardwick yesterday, who's their director of marketing. And, you know, she was joking because she, and she's probably going to kill me, but she said the way that she explains like the relationship between DIA and DVI is that DIA bakes the cake and DVI decorates it. So, you know, they get, they get all the ingredients together, they get all of it there. And then once it, once they're in downtown, then DVI's job is to, you know, support the stakeholders and to market and to collect analytics to understand how to better improve and throw events and, you know, basically like market downtown and make sure that everyone's really happy and that business owners and property managers are, you know, getting a good ROI. And so to that, when we support them, there are some things that we can support them very heavily on and with, which would totally be the stakeholder support, right? A big part for us as far as like, and it comes into what we talk about, it's matchmakers. You know, in all these conversations, the great thing is that we will have one conversation with one person and then we'll have a conversation with another person. And it's like, oh, wait, we just talked to so and so and Alan already gave some examples of where that's already happening, you know, three and a half weeks into this. In addition to that, the networking side of things, we will be hosting speaker panels. And this kind of goes into events as well, but we will be hosting speaker panels and we will be hosting small networking events, larger ones we're able to with, with COVID, where we're able to bring people in for a more relaxed version of conversation, just kind of getting to know each other. And while there's amazing networking organizations, such as downtown council or there's, you know, multiple Y P groups and all of the cultural institutes have different networking organizations. This one would solely be focused on kind of our mission and our vision, bringing together stakeholders and community and interested business owners, especially local business owners who we want to try to facilitate being able to get them into downtown where the ROI for both the building owner and for the businesses coming in, while it may not be in the immediacy, it is, it's doable and then therefore sustainable, right? As we grow. That going to the retail consultant, Alan has a lot, you know, that he can provide and give as far as understanding what it takes to actually be in the core. I mean, he had, you know, a very successful business restaurant in the core. And then I have a lot of experience coming into downtown with Red and Board, which I'm forever grateful for, as well as just over the years, understanding through what are events that, you know, that I was part of production for, those sorts of things, understanding what it takes to be successful as a retailer. You know, where is your placement and what side of the street are you on? And what street are you on and those sorts of things? The marketing side, there's a lot, there's a big drive for the influencer marketing side, which Visit Jax does a lot with as well, bringing in outside influencers from like a tourism standpoint. But there are ways that, you know, there are local influencers and those regionally, and then those who come in town. We actually just had an influencer in Jacksonville who was an influencer for a, another NFL team. And they actually came in town for that NFL team when the Jags were playing them and they were the ones and they wanted to do a whole story in Jacksonville because they were visiting Jacksonville, which I thought was very fun and interesting. So we would be able to help facilitate, you know, those conversations and help take them on a scooter tour, you know, give them the development side of things, not just what's currently here, but what's also coming in the future. Trade show is kind of the same thing. We're very fortunate to have a lot of information on projects that are going on currently. It's not just, oh, a headline in a newspaper. It's actually when we look at a map, we have access to and can tell you this is in this phase, this is in this phase, this is in this phase, kind of all around. And while, while DIA does that to some degree, we're having more one-on-one conversations with the different developers and the different business owners that are actually coming in. And we're able to kind of share those stories. There'll be a lot of, you know, Alan spoke to education. There'll be a lot on the marketing side that's really education for us to support DVI. Data collection support, this is, this kind of goes to understanding the metrics of downtown to help understand the needs and the wants. And this can kind of, this can be broken down and is broken down. DVI has a wonderful state of downtown report that they issue every year. And DIA also has this kind of information that you can, you can reach out and acquire. It's really interesting when you look at the density of downtown and when the density peaks and when the density subsides. Clearly there's a lot of density downtown when there's sports events. But interestingly enough, culture brings in a pretty hefty amount. And outside of a Jags game, I mean, culture brings in similar to what the hockey games and the baseball games and those sorts of things bring in. So it's really nice to know that people are traveling downtown for hockey. And now we just need to figure out how we can get them to stay downtown and support the organizations or the businesses that are down there. Events kind of all goes to all of what I just said, lots of collaborative programming Alan spoke to. I helped, we supported DVI in the Fieric and Friends River Taxis. We put bars on the boats and it was really successful. And it's amazing to think that if there were bars on the boats on a more regular basis, what we could do, would people ride, you know, would they, would they truly cruise the river cruise? If they could have a cocktail in hand or a mocktail in hand, right? Like, how do we make sure that we're providing something for all? And the answer is all the feedback that we received was absolutely, this would be a wonderful way to spend a Saturday to, you know, go from Ram up to the, to the Riverfront Plaza. Sorry, I was trying to, I was going to call the landing and I realized it sounded the same. Riverfront Plaza and those sorts of things. And then as the South Bank begins to grow, you know, how, how do we make that a fun experience? And then place making, this is for DVI, place making is one of their, kind of like one of their P ones. And so while they are wonderful at the place making side of it, we would be really, you know, beneficial to them because we have access and that's what we're doing. We're walking the walk, we're walking the buildings, we're talking to the building owners, identifying locations for, for the place making. You know, when, when DVI has an idea and a concept and knows that they need to do, you know, need and want to do something, we can go, oh, well, we were just here. And, you know, we're thinking that this would be really great for this one idea that you had or this other idea that you had. And then as well as source funding, you know, we are fortunate, we spoke to this earlier. We are fortunate, we have, you know, a large, a, a small group of some very significant donations. And we're looking though to grow that to more people with, you know, more with less give, without spreading it out around the community. And this would be, you know, and there's tons of them. They're also like, well, in addition to this, I'm happy to help you, but I really want to be involved in a project. I want to, you know, my legacy would be to be involved in a project. Do you know any projects that we could be involved in? So we can help with the funding for those sorts of things. We're, we're kind of at that point now where we, we really, 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 really want as much community involvement as possible. And so what we want you to do is we want you to go to our website and we want you to sign up to stay in touch. It's right now, our website is the landing page and then it also has links to our social media. But if you, if you, if you stay in touch, then you get on this beautiful list that will be used to, you know, send out communications and send out information and just kind of stay in touch and then you'll kind of have a one-way pathway to us. We encourage you to email us. We encourage you, if you want to have conversations and you want to hang out, to, to ask for a meeting, you know, ask to come meet with us. We are going, transparency is key for us. We understand that, you know, in some of the developments, projects that have been actively going on over the last decade, part of the reason that they didn't come to fruition was lack of communication and lack of transparency. And so we just want everyone to know that we are going to be fully transparent. And to that, Alan, unless you have anything else to add, we'll go ahead and let Ben start asking the questions so we can be transparent.
No, nothing to add. Thank you. I will say that, shout out to Ina with DIA. She answered a question about what is DPRP? And that kind of goes back to what I was saying. DIA does not get as many shout outs as they should. So they can't advocate for themselves or cheerleaders. So thank you, Ina, for your help on that and all the other stuff.
Well, all right. Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Alan. We do have some questions. I want to lead off with this. Gracie actually asked, what other cities have an organization like Build Up Downtown in place? What research went into creating an organization like this?
Laura, I think you've done a lot of that. I mean, there's a lot certainly out there, but Laura's spent a lot of time checking them out. The group that started it, you know, I can't speak to what they've done, but we've looked at a lot of similar and similar sized cities.
Sorry, I'm letting the dog out. Go on, girl. Sorry, it's of all the mornings, right? She's so hyper this morning. So, um, there, there's a couple, there are actually quite a few cities that had these organizations. And when Tampa is a perfect example of one. And when you look at Tampa, where they were 10 years ago, it took them about eight years. They were, we are where they were 10 years ago. And they put together a small organization and now that org has close to 20 people that are part of it. But what it, what that org specifically looked like in the beginning was very much like they were filling the gaps. They wanted to be like the connector, the tie between. St. Louis has a similar organization. They do it with minority owned businesses, but they do it in a way to try to bring in people into the core because they've actually had a very, they've had a mass exodus role recently, people leaving their core. But, you know, when, when we look at, to Alan's point, when those that, who had this idea on the backside, right? Who were the ones kind of talking about it? You know, I clearly can't speak for them. Their big thing was that they just wanted more open communication, that they've expressed us, you know, in agnostium. But for us, whenever I, you know, started looking into it and Alan and I started having conversations, I really wanted to see what other cities were doing to make sure that we weren't just spinning our wheels, right? And so I've reached out actually to Tampa's one that's really, it's kind of close because they have a wonderful river. They've been able, they showed success here. A lot of it was private funding. And so talking with them on what that looks like and how they were able to get everyone to play nicely in the sandbox is something that I have a lot of questions on. And I've reached out to them and hope to be in touch with them. There, there's a large conference in Tampa all next week. So they, as a, as a civic world are pretty overwhelmed. But they said, you know, going into the closer to the end of the year, that they'd be happy to get together and kind of talk. You know, we keep saying, we don't want to recreate, we're not here to recreate the wheel. Meaning we're, and we're also not here to, you know, stay within a box. So while we are going to look at what works well in other cities, we also understand Jacksonville is Jacksonville and it's its own lovely, wonderful beast. And so we need to make sure that while something may work in one city, that doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be a home run here. And then we do have to look at, we go back to that identity. We have to look at where we came from, who we are now and where we're going moving forward to see if that's something that would work well for us.
Thanks, Laura. I'm going to ask this one. I don't know if I saw it in the chat or not, or the presentation. Who's, who's funding this? Where's the funding coming from? Is this an advocacy group for those investors? How do you, you avoid appearing to favor certain groups? Who's, you know, I mean, I read some of this in, in the article, but where's, where's the money coming from right now?
That, I think is the key point right now versus next week, next month. You know, we are lucky to have had a couple of groups that really took the plunge and invested a fairly good amount of money to get this started. But the goal is to diversify that over very shortly. So right now it is J W B Capital, Corner Lot Development, The Chamber and Iguana Investments. But we have already gotten commitments from Iberia Bank for, for Horizon, New Horizon, sorry. We had a major nonprofit in downtown that is going to put in for funding next year for their fiscal year. So I don't want to say, but they're really excited and we've talked with them. And then we have talked to a few other developers already that are looking at possibly supporting it. And we have a list of groups, you know, Laura may have said it. We, we don't want a small number of big investors. We want a large number of small investors. And it really wants to show that diversity as well as, you know, we're here for, I like to say, we have one client, if you will, and it's this downtown Jacksonville. So how we get to serve that client is we want it to be as diverse as possible so that we can be beholden to none or beholden to many.
Thanks, thanks, Alan. I'm going to, this is kind of a little bit of a follow-up. This is from Bill Hoff. It's a question regarding autonomy. You know, when one of your supporters or investors might propose a project that conflicts with maybe Build Up Downtown's mission or DVI or DIA, will you push back? For example, let's say a suburban style development in an urban setting. You know, how do you, how do you propose to handle that?
We are, you know, we're going to advocate for smart development. And I think there's, that is a debatable subject in some, but there are, we're going to rely on our advisory committee and our board to kind of help decide where we want to put our support. But we will advocate against things that we don't agree with, absolutely. And will that be talking to board members or committee members or even possibly city council? But we want to advocate for smart development. But we will recognize when there's things that don't really meet our goals or possibly the city. So yeah, absolutely. So yeah, absolutely. We want to do more positive. We do think that, you know, and when projects come up that aren't popular, the voice is very strong in a lot of cases. But when projects come up that are good and when people are supporting a project, you know, that, that voice needs to be amplified as well, so.
A quick follow-up to that, Alan. Tom Larson had asked, what is Build Up Downtown's definition of smart development?
Yeah, that's a long answer. You know, and, and one, as I said earlier, you know, we specifically got, asked planner to be on our board. And then our advisory committee, we want a group that can help contribute to that answer. So for me to answer that as a former 20-year restaurateur, I don't think I'm going to satisfy. But, you know, simple is, you know, the ByStar parking garage, when they have retail on the bottom floor. I mean, that's something that is a no-brainer for everybody. Walkability in the city is very important, you know, connecting and filling empty spaces is huge for us. And that's why we want to help these small businesses get into these empty spaces. On the larger scale, you know, that's kind of where DVRB is, is, and they fill a role that they are more experienced to fill than me to answer that question in extreme depth.
But what it's not, I mean, people, some people have been asking smart. It's not tech smart, like we're, it's not, we're going to have a nest in every building and those kinds of things. But to that, we will be, you know, pushing for lead buildings, like smart energy buildings, yes. But in, in the definition, it's more about, you know, forward-thinking development, making sure that it meets the needs of the community as well as the infrastructure that we don't have. You know, when you plot out what's in one building, that what's next to it's complementary. It's not like we're just duplicating the same building over and over and over and over and over again. So it's smart, meaning well thought out and planned.
Perfect. Laura, I think you know this one's coming. This one's for me as well. So The Business Journal had an article, I believe it was yesterday, that listed Jacksonville as a supernova city, according to the Urban Land Institute, and listed a number of amazing cities. So it's great to be a part of it. More often than not, great cities have an identity. What would you say Jacksonville's current identity is and is that changing?
So, and I spoke a little bit earlier about the identity and this is, it was in, because of a conversation with you. And Ben, you're a very good friend of mine and I think, and I trust you a lot as one of the voices that's important. You know, what our identity is, it's my grandmother and it's my daddy. And it's, you know, it's, it's our history, right? It's, it's anyone on this call whose family's from here. It's anyone on this call whose ancestors are from here. It's anyone on this call who's actively involved in an organization that is supporting and pushing history. I mean, our identity is our history. It's how we got here. We wouldn't be here without it. And then there's today, right? Which for you, my, and use the generic you, might look different or it does look different than what I, what my needs and wants and whatnot are right now. And then, you know, what that will look like moving forward as a collective. So our identity right now is, it's a mixture of the past and what's happening today. That's our current identity. What our identity moving forward will look like will then be, you know, a culmination of, of those things moving forward. Cause today becomes history. It's like this really fun little wheel. You know, supernova, I, I will be very, very honest with everyone. I am not a fan of giving an adjective to, to us as a city, right? Only in that, I feel like that for those who only read the headlines and those that don't have enough information, don't really know what that means. And then if something doesn't, like they associate supernova, you know, so I know what a supernova is, but like to them, it's, it's like this beautiful, and it sounds beautiful and it's great and it's wonderful. But if something doesn't happen, that's supernova-esque, a beautiful explosion in outer space, like in two weeks, then someone who only read that headline is going to say, well, nothing happened. I don't know how they could call supernova. And it's like, well, okay, hang tight, hang tight, hang tight. So I, I, while I, I want to say that we are, the adjectives that I would use for the city are a little bit different. But for our identity, you know, who we are now is who we were and who we are today, our identity moving forward. And it sounds so circular, but it kind of is. Our identity moving forward, you know, I can only hope is a more communicative, community-driven approach. You know, some of the hurdles that Jacksonville's had over the last decade really do come from lack of transparency and lack of communication. And almost ignoring, purposely ignoring the fact that not everyone understands it, right? And so what we want to make sure that we're doing is we're educating the person in Mandarin on what a rev grant is, to understand that it's self-generated, that the city didn't literally grant the money to someone. They didn't give them a check, right? It is self-generating. We want to educate someone on what the J bill that Alan talked about that just passed city council. And it happened to pass on the same night that the Four Seasons Plan made it. So it's, it's almost like it got lost. But the fact that we were able to pass legislation to reduce the restaurant seating capacity to 50 people is huge for small businesses coming into Jacksonville. Like I, I can't even begin to explain it enough. So many of our historic buildings are small. You can't fit 100 seats in there, even if you stuck them on top of each other. So it kind, you know, it prevents people from coming in. So our identity moving forward, you know, I can only hope is more, is one more of wanting to sit down and collaborate, wanting to sit down and understand a better, greater Jacksonville and understanding that without a center core of Jacksonville, that there aren't the suburbs and there aren't all these wonderful things that we have out in our, in our, you know, and kind of like our arms of Jacksonville. And that we, we just want to be a, help be a facilitator for that identity moving forward as well. Long-winded, I know, y'all know I talk a lot. I'm sorry.
Anything to add, Alan?
No, not, no. Well, I do want the J bill. It was funny. Laura's like, where's the story about the J bill? I was like, there were a couple of other things in city council that had a little more importance going on, like shipyards and charity things. But yeah, it was good.
I've got a couple of questions that I kind of want to lump together here. Michael Jenkins, a new minority-owned restaurant owner that's located on the west side of Jacksonville. As we're going through future expansion plans, what opportunities are there for us to connect with you guys? As we're interested in looking downtown, at the downtown market. Gracie had asked, how do pre-existing small businesses that are already located downtown partner with you? And Michael Armando, same thing. How does an existing downtown business get involved? We are open to every opportunity to help build retail shopping downtown. So that's kind of three, you know, sort of connected questions.
Yeah, yeah. You know, certainly getting in touch with us directly, we're happy to help. I, I would be remiss in saying all of this information is also on the DIA's website. It's all the, the programs, but I love filling out applications and filling out, helping people with performers if they're needed in some of these to kind of get them through that process. There's a lot of, you know, FabRep is the one I mentioned earlier, food and beverage retail enhancement. If you're in a couple of different specific zones like Laura, Hogan, Forsyte, Adams, and then the Elbow, you can get really great forgivable loan grants to really kind of grow the retail and food and beverage business in those areas. There's facade enhancement grants that are, are there to help improve the exterior. The sidewalk enhancement that Bellwether did, really, you know, we want to be a resource and that's what, you know, big part of what we want to do. And DIA is super busy with these large projects. So it's these small ones that we really want to kind of help facilitate and grow. Again, they've got a great website with all the information, but our contact is always available. I've got several folks that I've already been talking with about getting really, and it's for new and existing. So it is important to notice there's a lot for existing businesses and for new ones.
Thanks, Alan. I'm going to probably ask two questions. I'm going to kind of jump, lump those together. But in the effort to keep us good on time, I don't, I don't want to take too long. But Nancy Powell had asked, are you involved with DuPont Riverfront Activation Planning? And Dr. Burton, are you collaborating with the Emerald Trail Project by Groundwork Jacksonville? Couple of different things there.
I, to this point being, just being supportive, very supportive of both of those. We have just been going for three and four weeks. So we're kind of getting ours together, but we have both followed those projects almost since inception on our own, before we even started in this role. And I know Kay Yee-Hass very well with the Emerald Trail. And we've gone, we've been on different sides of subjects and we've been on the same side ever since because she's done great work there and what they're doing. And, you know, I used to kind of joke with her, what she's doing is spurring development. Whoever thought Ms. Ms. Yee-Hass would spur development? But I say that good-naturedly because there's so many people buying property around that Emerald Trail, the, the new and the future, that it's really a great project. The, the parks with the DuPont, I mean, we, again, this is a place where we couldn't do any better. They've done a fantastic job putting that together. And, you know, it's exciting to see the possibility of linking with that park. And I think they've got a program Tuesday at five, they're going to be kind of unveiling it. But the early parts that I've seen really link the central business district with the sports and entertainment district. And I, it's just great work, so. Laura, yeah?
Sorry, my computer was kind of wonky. No, I just, I mean, nothing necessary to add. I think that, you know, I will, I will speak to this. It's, it's interesting and wonderful to be with, with like, this is kind of a shout out to like Alan and the group in general. It's nice to be around like-minded people. I mean, I think we all want great park space and we all want, you know, we talk about this collective voice for Jacksonville. And there are some things that regardless of whose planet it is, there's lots, there's, everybody kind of wants some of the very same similar things. And that part is huge and monumental. And so, you know, as Alan said, like we, our, our job is not to sit and necessarily pick one over the other, other than to support if it is within, if it is within our mission and our vision. I always go back to that and I, I, so they're like, we'll always go back to that. A lot of, a lot of these plans, they all can fit very well nicely together. And so, you know, and I love Kay just as much as Alan said, like I, I, I want every plan to incorporate the Emerald Trail into everything because it's an absolutely wonderful idea and would be huge for Jacksonville. And that's smart development. Walkability is smart development. So no, I mean, I just, I think that while, while it's not our job, like we are not experts at the ones who are, we are not experts at designing landscape parks, you know, those walkable trails, those sorts of things. That's not our job. Our job is to make sure that we are facilitating, supporting, advocating for the city of Jacksonville, community-wise as a whole, to move forward in a smart development plan. So while we are, you know, in support of anything that is smart and good for the city, I think that we are, we're not necessarily attaching our name to anything at this moment.
Just getting in another question here from Bonnie Arnold. What, what is, what kind of budget are you guys working with right now? I'm sure it's, it's, it's limited. And is there a board that you're putting together? Is that yet or is it in place? Who's on that board?
Transparency.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it's a low budget for sure. You know, it's covering mostly operational costs at this point, but as it grows, we look forward to covering programs. We've talked to a couple of groups who really want to give and, and support programs, which is going to be a big part of it. Marketing is going to be a big part. The board as of now is Alex Bakas, Andy Allen, Carrie Stewart, Enes Davis and Matt Brockleman with ByStar. And it's not complete, but there's a few others. Oh, wait.
And England, and yeah, and England joined.
Industry West, correct? Yeah.
Yes, and she is a wonderful, wonderful human.
And there's, and we have an advisory board as well that's going to be larger. And it's a lot of stakeholders who honestly, a lot of them serve on like four to five boards. They're like, I can't have another board, but I can advisory board. So we've got a large group of people across a lot of different professions and backgrounds and, you know, subject matters as well.
Okay.
We cannot, we cannot stress enough, you know, because that question's been asked. We are not, those that back us, it's, it's, we are eternally grateful, right? It's, it's what we need, but we want to make sure that we have a diverse board and that we have a diverse advisory council and that we have diverse patrons because this is a community project. It's not created solely to push one person's agenda over the others.
Well, thank you to both of you. There's a few other questions, but in, in the spirit of time, I know people have to get going on, on their day. We'll get those over to Alan and Laura for some follow-up on some of the other questions. But we are just so thrilled that you could all join us, hang with us for this, learning about this exciting project. Thank you, Alan. Thank you, Laura. I'm sure we will have you back to hear updates as this goes along. So with that, I am going to turn it back over to our fearless leader, Gracie Simmondinger.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Ben, for moderating. For those of you that are new to downtown council, Laura is normally the one doing that. And so since she was a part of the keynote, we wanted to make sure that, you know, we had some coverage. So thank you, Ben, who's also our vice president for downtown council for, for helping that out. Thank you, Laura and Alan, so much for joining us today. This has just been an incredible opportunity for us to ask additional questions because your organization is so new and it's very exciting. And you're going to be involved in a lot of the projects that we've been hearing about for so long. And, and so just to have you both a part of, a part of those means that they are going to be successful. And so I just want to thank you for sharing more about, you know, your efforts. And as Ben mentioned, we look forward to staying in touch. So our next meeting will be Friday, November 5th on Zoom at 8:00 AM. And our keynote speaker will be Greg McGarrett, who's the president and CEO of Gator Bowl Sports. In addition, we've been getting a lot of questions about, when are we going back to in person? And so I'm really excited that so many people are eager to see one another and get back in person. So I just want to share with everybody that the goal is to be back in person in 2022. So we will continue to meet on Zoom for the remainder of this calendar year. And then more to come on details of, of, you know, our, our meetings and location and such in 2022. So we're very excited to see you as well, but just know that just a couple more months and, and we'll be together again. I just want to mention too, that, you know, our website is downtowncouncil.org. Look out for more information and signups from Brian Tuttle, our membership chair, and, and some upcoming emails. And do not forget to subscribe to our podcast. We're very excited about it. And so shout out to Darren and Derek from D White and Company for putting that together for us. But other than that, I'm going to give you two minutes back in your day. Thank you so much for hanging on and being a part of this meeting and we hope you have a wonderful weekend.
See you, everybody.
Bye.
Goodbye.
Goodbye.